I've got two up here.
You ready?
Her and her husband went there and named it getting a war.
I don't know, but I don't know if I can do this here yet. I kind of peed earlier.
Yeah, I'm tired, man. This is really.
Okay. Okay, it's two thirty. And that's the real time for this. We have two reconsiderations. First one is in their MLDs, first one is MLDs or four eight S two two. Grand Copper Estates, the second one is MLDs or five one S two two Coyote Bridge. Where we get started. Nobody else in here, so I don't think anybody's got a hearing. Revisional impairment. I'll go and call for conflict.
Commissioner Bradshaw has no conflict.
I'll have no conflict for the record. Commissioner Bradshaw, Commissioner McDonald, President, Commissioner Conley is. So if staff is ready. Go ahead and begin.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Chad James for the record, planning staff. We're here today to discuss a. Denial, administrative denial of a minor land division. And this property, this plot is Grand Cooper Estates. The property is situated in a portion of section twenty, twenty-one, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine, township fifty-six north, range two east. And the project site's kind of located near on high off a highway two hundred. And so it's a forty, approximately a forty point three eight acre parcel, and. I just want to kind of note here, highlight the applicant here. Val Jean Holdings LLC, and that's something we're going to discuss throughout this kind of review memo that I prepared for you today. So this is the plot that's being proposed or was proposed to planning staff. And we can see here they're proposing lot one, two, and three, and four. But as we look to the immediate north, we can actually see a number of parcels that are already kind of existing under common ownership, and so that's why we're here today. And this is in large part why the file was denied. So the letter written to appeal on this file indicated that the planning department's interpretation of the MLD codes. Title twelve, chapter six, six sixty B and six eleven. It's misinterpreted essentially. And ultimately resulted in a. Incorrect conclusion. So the file is, the application was filed on May tenth, the appeal was filed July thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. So the property would be accessed by highway two hundred, which connects to a private easement, and that private easement does appear to be existing that leads up to those parcels to the north there. The site does contain quite a bit of slope on it. There are some map wetlands as well as an intermittent stream that runs through the property. It was reviewed for floodplain found to be in zone X. The services on site. Would be individual wells, approved drain field sites. It's not located within a fire district. Would be powered by a Vista Utilities and it's in the Lake Ponderay School District eighty-four. So when staff looked through the file and reviewed it. We did find that the proposal was consistent with the agricultural forestry ten acre zoning district, all proposed lots do conform to that standard. However, as we look at the code and we look at title twelve, chapter six hundred, the purpose of it is, you know, it is unlawful for a person or a group of persons acting in concert. To attempt to avoid this article by acting in concert to divide a parcel of land or sell subdivision lots using a series of owners or conveyances. Or by any other method that ultimately results in division of lands into a subdivision or sale of subdivided land. And so as staff reviewed it, and this is the way staff has been interpreting the code. To date, that basically the attempt to plat. This. Parcel into four lots would be an attempt to circumvent the subdivision ordinance insofar as the properties to the immediate north are under common ownership. And in essence, it would create ten properties. Under common ownership without a road built to the private road standards. And to elaborate on that a little more, the roads and access portion of our code in title twelve, chapter six. That would be triggered in a short plot application or subdivision application. Specifically note that, you know, the idea behind road standards. Or properties, you know, when we're looking at short plots and subdivisions is to create roads built to private road standards that are connected. And that meet that standard and would be improved to that standard. And one thing I'd note too is when GIS reviewed this, they did indicate in the report that they would require a road name for this. You know, existing easement that runs through the property. And so based on that, that was staff's analysis of it, and as a result of that, we found that it was not consistent with the revised code. And that, you know, the appeal does not provide adequate evidence for reversing the decision. And so ultimately, again, those four lots would result in ten lots or ten lots and or parcels under common ownership. There's no evidence in the record to suggest that the properties under common ownership are limited to use or common space or agricultural pursuits. And allowing the minor land division to be approved would defeat the purpose, intent, and standards of the subdivision ordinance. Insofar as it would permit the applicant to subdivide the property without having to build and or upgrade the roads to the standards set forth in the private road standards of title twelve appendix A. And so that's kind of staff's conclusion. I just wanted to, you know, pull up the map for just a moment to kind of. Look at the property and it's, you know, kind of properties to the north here. So this is the property in question here. And these are the properties to the north. And as we start to select some of them, we can see indeed. This is the same owner. And so again, that's staff's interpretation of the code, and that's why we're here today. And at this point, slope here, I can take any questions Commissioners might have.
Those, so what were those other, what were those other parts to the north planted?
So they're actually not platted, they're parcels.
What were they created?
That is a good question. So as we look at the deed history, this warranty deed here. I'm sorry, yes, of course. This warranty deed, it was actually something I looked into a bit. So this warranty deed here, I believe, shows that conveyance to the current landowner from a. A Mitchell Martin and Karen Martin to right here Vanjean Holdings. So, and that was done in twenty twenty-one, right? So we're fairly close to the time in which this application was filed for this minor land division from the time in which these properties were conveyed from one landowner to the next, too, which I should also note. But as we go back and we look at the deed history. You know, really what I can find is there was a boundary line adjustment done at some point in two thousand and nine. There is a record of survey on file that's actually called out on the plot. But I believe that was around two thousand nine, two thousand seven. And further past that, I wouldn't know without looking at a title report based on the information we have available at GIS.
Around. Two thousand five, two thousand seven.
I don't know if they were created then. There was a record of survey filed then. So to be honest, I'm not exactly sure as to when they were created. There is a boundary line adjustment, that's my understanding, yes. Yep.
Do you have any question? Dan, you're up. Yes.
So Dan, I'm just going to go ahead and open all these PDFs and then. Well, I don't, there's all kinds of exhibits, which do you, which ones do we want to start with? You have number two, three. So we have code in. Code text, and then we have code. So this one, start with?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm not to put this around. See. We show the screen here. If you want, I can control the exhibits for you.
Yeah, I can, I can power out.
Just let me know. I'll start from this one, we'll go to two.
Dan Provol, project representative. I can answer the question on when those parcels were. Created. We can do an exhibit. Are you doing exhibit city? Parcels were created back in nineteen nineteen. There's a series of mining claims that are all valid. And some of them dissected or dissected. They're ended up being. Eight, eight parcels created in nineteen nineteen. So the, the earlier boundary line adjustment deed that Chad pulled up. That happened in oh nine, that was an adjustment of boundaries of those very parcels that've been. In existence since, yeah, hundred years. So we didn't create any new, or should say the previous owner didn't create any new parcels at that time, they just adjusted what's been there. For a very long period of time. I have. Record of surveys by a different surveyor. That shows the document, how they lay out. If we need to do an exhibit on these or of record.
You're going to submit them, they need to be stamped in.
That's good, it did that twenty minutes ago.
They all different?
Some page, one page, two, one document that has three pages. So we have two separate surveys. One done by Alan Caber. For JD Lumber Company. And. We have a second. Record of survey. That was completed by. Those completed by James A. Soul and Associates in. December of oh nine. That shows the way the parcels. Laid out after the boundary line adjustment, and then we have a large forty acre repainter, and that's our subject property, that large forty. What we're seeing here will not create, my client did not create all those other parcels. He did purchase the entire group. And the forty acre remainder. So. This isn't an attempt to try to get around something that was previously created, and now we're going to add some more creation to it. Those, those are very old parcels that were just lot line adjust. By a, the previous owner of the project. My client comes along and purchases the whole thing, says, let's take the forty and divide it into four. Lots. Again, not an attempt to try to get around something. So with that being said, what I'd like to do is point out a few things and just get lined up and what I'm seeing that what the code says and how way it's being interpreted. We have exhibit one. Everything with the acreages on them, the one sixty, eighty, the two forties. We're going to say those are in common ownership, same guy owns those. So the current interpretation. Of the code would not allow that man to do, that owner to do a. Minor land division at all. He already owns four parcels, so that's the way it's been interpreted. The way. I see it reads is right next to it, same thing, the common ownership still there, but we have the ability to do minor land division on the one forty. Into four tens. Staff is currently counting that and they're saying. No, now you've got four, five, six, seven parcels. But there is nowhere in the code that says you need to count parcels outside of the application that you're applying for. You have your minor land division. You're applying for. You're applying for a four lot split within. A single parcel. We bring up the text, let's bring up the text.
Yeah.
Okay, so I went back in the ordinances from the time the minor land division was created. And then I dropped down to the one that was amended and then also now the one we're at today. So the way it reads out, I kind of highlighted what we had going there, minor land division. Shall mean any division of land into four or fewer lots, and that's what we're trying to accomplish. It was, it, let me just read that up, applications. For minor land division which contains, which contains. Minor land division application itself contains, we're not looking outside of the. We're not looking outside of the application, our application is for a four lot. Subdivision or minor land division, and it says right there. Application for a minor land division which contains four or fewer contiguous slots under common ownership. That's not to be interpreted that now you go outside and you find all the contiguous parcels. Adjoins. And adjacent and say, well, no, you got to count all that. Says right here that contains four or fewer contiguous. Lots under common ownership. And it may be processed as a minor land division. So an amendment came in and says, applications for. A minor land division which contain four or fewer contiguous slots. We're talking about the application, we're not talking about, nor does it say anything about any. Parcels owned by anybody else outside of the application parcel itself. Not once does it say must contain. Does not say all adjoining contiguous parcels owned by the applicant must be included in the MLD lot count, which is what's happening here. Ordinance that's in place now that was just. Recorded last August. Was changed slightly. It says any division of land into four or fewer lots. It doesn't say. A total of, it just says the land that you are splitting, the division of that. Into four or fewer parcels. It doesn't say everything that the. That the owner of the applicant or the land of the applicant is also has to be counted within that. Exception, I think, is what's really throwing things off. Those lots under common ownership and limited, so we're talking about the same. Lots here. Those lots. Within subdivision or which in the application. Under common ownership and limited in use to common open space or agricultural pursuits need not be counted as a lot. They're talking about a commonly owned lot within. The application. That doesn't bring in everybody else, that doesn't bring in what. Whatever the applicant's land holdings are, there could be hundreds of acres, there could be dozens of parcels. They don't get counted here. That's not part of what we're doing. They're talking the exception, the exception to the rule is you don't have to count. A lot if it's a common area. Or of common use, whether it be agricultural common use or whether it be. A common area where people go and have a picnic. That's what they're talking about. If you have four lots and. A common area. It's not lot five, it's not counted at all, it's within the application. They're not trying to say that if you. If you own three twenties in a row and you go to do the minor land division on the one, you count the other two twenties, which aren't part of the application, they're not part of the subdivision, they're not part of any kind of a division whatsoever. There are separate parcels where they're owned by the client or whether they're owned by. Other people. So the division of land and four fewer lots or parcels is the division of and can only refer to the land within the application being divided. Exception, the exception is referring to the lot count within the minor land. Division application only, the exception is referencing common area within the at minor land division application only. The common ownership lot within the minor land division that is being used for open space or as agricultural purposes needs not be counted. It does not refer to any or all adjoins and contiguous parcels owned by the applicant. We drop down, same ordinance on the code book now. Applications for the minor land division which contain or fewer contiguous slots under common ownership may be processed as a minor. Talking about the four lots. Within. The application, application for a minor land division which contain for fewer lots, it doesn't say. It doesn't say. That you have to count all contiguous. Outside of that. We bring up.
Exhibit two, you got it.
Exhibit two shows just kind of what we're talking about, we go owner one still owning everything except for the twenty, that's. Got the hatch marks through it, exhibit two A shows. What they're talking about, common ownership. So we've got, say, we want to do a. We want to do a minor land division there on that south, the, the two twenties. And so, but you have two different owners. The common ownership within the minor land application, this is another way you could look at this. Not allowed by the code, that's what they're saying. If it's not common. You can't have a single minor land division. We see the next one. There's another, they're talking about contiguous ownership. So you got non-contiguous ownership, you can't do a minor land division application if the tens that you are trying to create are not contiguous. You got to have them in contiguous ownership, you can't go two tens and another ten on the other side of somebody else, even though you own the property, they're saying you can't do that. And that's fine, that's what it's talking about. Exhibit three, exception, common space need not be counted as a lot, that's just exactly what we're talking about there. You got four tens and a common space, you don't count the common space as a fifth lot. You have something that. Fits what the code is saying right there. They're not talking about common space, common ownership out in the seventy, they're not talking about the common ownership out in forty or one sixty, what is within the application itself? We do the next one. Oh, what ifs? I guess we can pull that up, but we have a what if, let's go to the next one. So we've got. We've got an owner out there. He splits the forty acres into four tens. But on the code, back on the code, it says that you. Can do a second minor land division. If you wait two years, if you do it before, you have to go through a plating process. So let's say this is five acre zoning. You can't go in there. You cannot go in there in two years. And split one of those tens. Into two fives, even though it says right here that you can go back in and re do a minor land division in two years. Because what happens is under the, the, the misinterpreted code, you already have four, you can't do another minor land. So it says you can in two years and then under the misinterpreted code. Says you already got four, you can't do minor land division, even though you can go and do, you know, you could split that say into a couple of fives, whether it be one ten or two tens. Do your four. So those two codes are an exact. Reversal of each other. Direct conflict of what we're trying to say here. If the code's correctly. Interpreted, you get the four and in two years you can go in and split it into a couple of fives. Allows you to wait two years, another minor land division. So we're just showing that. So I'd like to jump back if I could to. The actual GIS aerial overlay.
Sorry.
I'm just going to cover again what we're trying to do here. We've got many lots is. Nine lots, I guess there was nine in the. There was nine in the middle at all. So we got the original. Original layout created in nineteen nineteen and nineteen oh seven or nine, there they came in, they adjusted the existing. Like that, and then a large acre remainder for you. My client goes in and purchases the whole thing. He's not part of that, he's not trying to get around a subdivision process that wasn't subdivision, it wasn't a complex issue of. Deeding it to one person and deeding it to somebody else and trying to do it. In place for a hundred years. So then he ends up with forty acre remainder, that's going to get first minor. Four lots of forty acre, by code. The road exists, it shows up on. Record of survey there. So one of the other comments of staff is there's no evidence that in the record that suggests the process to north under common ownership or limited use. And again, bouncing back to what I had said before, the common and open space has nothing to do with what's outside of the flat. I don't know of any common open spots that people do on their own property, part of a flat process or P U D product process that gets you a common owner to otherwise you own it, why would you do a common? Why, if it already existed, why would you bring it into minor land? Or if you want to give a common area to the homeowners, you could do that, that's what it's saying, you don't have to count that as a lot. You don't go out looking. Upstream or sideways or it's common ownership, it, it doesn't say you have to count those as part of the four. The original four. Or this in the application. What the code does say is that you cannot. A minor land division shall not be used continuously to avoid regular subdivision process. That's not what we're doing. We're not doing a second. Minor land. Let's see if we had another point, let's say there wasn't so many up there and there was twenty next to it. Not only would you not count that as part of the four, but we're not. Asking to subdivide that. But what this says is you can't do the one minor land division, the second one right next to it. It says contiguous. Minor land division shall not be used continuously to avoid a regular subdivision process. This couldn't be part of it, we're not using another minor land division. And then the second minor land division behind it, this isn't the land division, the properties have been placed for a hundred years. As far as the roads, the roads are in place, the. It shows up on those, not to. County roads, facts. But if we were, if we were to do. I guess I'm a little bit confused, staff through it, saying that because we have all these, we would have to do a full blown subdivision. But those lots are already in compliance. Wouldn't be bringing them into the subdivision. They wouldn't be part of an eleven lot subdivision. Fire because of eleven lots or more. It doesn't make sense whatsoever. It doesn't make sense whatsoever. I think we're there on this one. Questions?
Um, no, but I will, I don't have any questions at this point. Like, fortunately, we were, we understand the intent of the. Close to that loophole, so I think. Any questions?
Yes, please. Um, so I want to just note a couple of things here and we'll go back to the code and I'll be brief. Promise. But real quickly, as we look at Title twelve, chapter six. Um, the purpose here unlawful for a person or group of persons. Acting in concert to attempt to avoid this article. Um, and I want to note here, it says to divide a parcel of land or sell subdivision lots using a series of owners or conveyances or by any other method. So not, you know, or by any other method, right? And so again, we're kind of looking at a property. If it were to be subdivided, it would end up actually thirteen total lots and in the staff memo, I actually need to amend. Instead of ten lots for the project summary, that should be thirteen, as well as the findings of fact, that should be thirteen as well. That's how many properties, parcels and or lots we would end up with. I also wanted to note that the issue here is if we go back to the property and look at it briefly, it's the common ownership, right? If you were to sell this property and someone were to apply for a minor land division. That is not connected to that landowner, is not a friend or business partner, has no connection and staff can't prove that, we would process this application. The issue here is the common ownership. I also want to touch on briefly what Dan said about. A minor land divisions and not being able to do another minor land division in two years. We're theorizing doing four. And then waiting two years and doing another. You know, four, right? What if you did a minor land division, you had twenty acres? You divided that twenty into two tens and then two years later, you've divided those two tens into fives for an R five zone. That would be allowed under code. And so in closing, this is again the position of staff. This was debated heavily among ourselves. Before we really came to this inclusion and interpretation of the code, it is a very rigorous and strict interpretation. And I'm actually thankful that this was appealed, so we can get some more clarity from the board moving forward.
So we took up similar files last week. Feels on the industry. LBS. And. Original intent. Of closing the loophole was to make sure that if we had, if a guy had. Hundred acres that he that he broke into twenties. And then did a minor land division on one twenty. We actually had this happen, this was what prompted, we had this, we had a couple of these, one over Blanchard was the first one that kind of got our attention. It was a long section of twenties, you have five twenties, he. Did my land division, the first one, and then he went back to the very back one, did minor land division. And then he was starting to check the board in, and so we went, wait a minute, there's a problem with this, this, so. Really, the intent was that you get one. Even though there was common ownership, what we're trying to say was that. Okay, if you want to do minor land division, you can do it on one twenty, one of the twenty two being broken into fives. On one twenty, but all the rest of them, you're gonna have to go through the subdivision process. Because we were concerned about infrastructure roads, that type of thing, even though. They're they're private roads or public roads privately maintained. Probably was out or even a private road. Which being the one that we really want that much to do with regardless of the county. As far as what the bridge goes, but. That was the original intent, and I think somewhere along the line, it got misinterpreted. Where if there was common ownership of multiple parcels. Then you can't do an M L P, and that really wasn't the intent, but I think it, I think our previous planning director may have possibly misinterpreted our things. I know we. We discussed this at length for months. To try to come up with, how do we do this correctly? What's its, what are we trying to accomplish? And it was just, it really was that, it was to close that loophole and basically tell them, listen, if you've got five twenties and you want to, and you, and it says, it's five zone. Zone five acre minimums, you can do one minor land division. If you want to do any more development, you're gonna have to come do a subdivision, we're gonna have to see the roads, blah, blah, blah. Um, and again, we took this up last, but there were two files last week as well. They were the same.
It was.
I think it was last week. It seems like forever ago. But, um. But that's it. So and we basically ruled the same way last week. In that it was a, it was a, and we're not blaming you because I think this is the way you were given the interpretation. Um, but that was the original intent from the commissioners is that, you know what? Yeah, we don't want to see a bunch of random development without infrastructure. I, of course, I argue to solicit, they're gonna develop it, they're gonna have to have roads anyway. Because nobody, unless their, unless their clients own helicopters. But regardless, as a stopgap, to make sure that we had. The ability to to plan ahead in the future, and let's say there was another piece of land behind it that, you know, are. You know, they would have to do a subdivision, so then we could talk about, you know, punching a road to make it so it's up to the next. Potential. Whatever it is behind it. So. That was the intent. I think that's where we got off track a little bit on this. And that was evident on the two files last week, and I think it's evident on this as well as that. I think you were doing your job as you were told the interpretation should should be. But it wasn't the intent of the interpretation from the commissioners. The intent of the interpretation was even if you had. Contiguous parcels, they could do one. And that's it. So if they came in next year or two months from now. And said, okay, now we want to do one over here. Wait a minute. You want to do anything else, you're gonna have to, you have to go through the subdivision process. The other one that makes it a little more interesting too is that. If this existing owner had created those other eleven parcels, eleven, whatever the number is. Then it would probably give me even more reason, a little more reason to pause, but I would still fall back on what our original intent was based on. Um, the facts of the ground at the time. And it's good that. Like I said last week, I think it's good to speed test. Whenever you come up with the ordinance, it's great to have it tested because. Um, a lot of these guys are really crafty and they come up with all different ways to, you know, slither around, no offense, Dan. Slither around our ordinances. That was the first thing we noticed, because we did, it's great that minor land division, that was created right before Jeff and I came in, but I thought it was great and I understood. The intent of that was to bring. All these non-conforming little mini things into. Into into performance. Because of the way the state of Idaho has, they'll deal with it. Those you guys can just go right and report it. So we thought, what a great way to do that. And to that end, that worked really well. We got a lot of these, you know, kind of tucked into the fold. But then we realized our exposure at that first one over in the Blanchard area, and then we saw, I think it was two or three more, so that's. When we moved to try to create that. That deal where, okay, you get one. Once you shoot your one. That shot's gone. It's a single shot rifle, so. So I think my opinion is, I think, I think it does meet the the intent of what we were trying to accomplish with that loophole. And I would have, I would move to go ahead and. And approve the appeal. Just knowing that, yeah, there's, you don't have, you don't have another bullet in that gun.
Yeah. If that was all one big parcel. Then he could. Do the four to flip. One time without any problems whatsoever. Zone ten, four ten. The other piece is one big piece. Both other pieces not one big piece. By no doing's it is. They've been that way for a hundred years. So they kind of, it's a different situation. And. He didn't have to do his own changes to go from there. Correct?
If you want to do less than ten.
Yeah. And so, well, any of those others you split, you're gonna end up with something way less than ten is way. So. Yeah, it's a. There were one size fits all, but. I would allow it, and that's one.
Well, I'll go entertain a motion to. To approve, which is overturning the administrative decision.
All right, I'll make a motion to overturn the previous decision and.
Well, there's no read the. Read the motion, read this one, read this one. On page six, seven.
I'm looking to overturn the administrative pursuit of Bonner County Planning Department for denial of the project filed. M L D double off forty eight, statute twenty two. Grand Popper Estates have requested by a forty point three eight acre parcel in the four lots, one. Ten point three or two acre lot. Ten point zero five acre lot. One ten. Five acre lot and one ten point seven acre lot. Findings that isn't afforded to Bonner County revised code, a further move to adopt finding in fact. Conclusions of laws set forth in staff memo. Direct planning staff that draft written findings and conclusions reflect this dispute. And the chairman signed and printed to all interested parties. The action does not result in the taking of private property.
And I'll sit down for a chair a second. We'll call this. Hi.
Hi, man.
So we'll move on to the second file. M L D zero zero five one dash two two.
It's not. We call for conflicts first real quick.
All right.
No, I have no conflict. Um, all right. So this is again Chad Chambers, planning staff for the record. We're here for an appeal for Coyote Ridge, which is a minor land division proposal to divide a forty acre. Parcel, give or take into four lots. Um, projects located off Peakview Drive and section thirty four Township fifty six North Range, three west Boise Meridian. The applicants for this file are Tariq and Catherine Saab. And again, we have Dan Provo with us today. The application was filed on the seventeenth. And here we can see. The subdivision or sorry, minor land division rather, as proposed, showing those four lots. So again, the applicant's project representative wrote a letter very much similar to the last one. It was actually for the most part a copy paste. Um, the application was appealed again on July thirteenth. On the properties on rural ten acre and. The land use designation is rural residential. Um, the proposed lots would be accessed by two different easements, Peakview Drive. Um, and a thirty foot wide. Easement for ingress, egress and utilities. Um, there are some map slopes on the property, does contain some wetlands, does contain an intermittent stream. Um, there's one soil type, ponderay silt loam, characterized as not prime farmland, but is well drained. So reviewed for floodplain, found to be in zone X. Uh, no further floodplain review was required because we're not looking at a development proposal to actually start construction. Um, services on site, if approved, would be a typical typical wall drain field. It's in the Seigel taxing fire district. Uh, it would be powered by a VISA and a Lake Ponderay School District eighty four. Um, staff did review this against the zoning ordinance, found it consistent with that or meeting the ten acre zoning requirement for the proposed lots. Um, and again, this one, as before. The reason for the appeal for this one is actually staff. Administratively approved this request, but only for the creation of three. Lots total and created a condition of approval that the plat would be revised to create three lots. Instead of four as originally proposed, because to the immediate west. Um, we're under common ownership again, and I'll pull up the map and show you that. Um, so that was kind of the rationale again with that. Um, no evidence in the record that suggested the properties to the west are under common owners, uh, common open space or being used for agriculture pursuits. Um, the division, if if approved, again, would allow for a road to be designed and constructed, not to the standards and Title twelve appendix A. Um, staff is again kind of recommending approval of that, that the administrative decision as. You know, as as written in the staff report, the collector report prepared. And so, and we'll pull up the plot real quick here. Again, this is the property. Um, I'll change the screen here to show you the map. And as we look to the immediate west here, we see Tariq and Catherine Saab. Um, own this property here. So again, it's kind of the same rationale as before, and at this time I can take any questions.
Dan Provo. Chad, could we zoom in on that a little bit better? Okay, we're looking at the the blue outline. That's our forty acre that we are applying to. Split into four parcels. The same owner. Owns the one to the west, he's at twenty five acres there. He purchased that twenty five along with the parcel to the north, so the road split a a. He bought two parcels there. And then he. We adjusted that for him and split that instead of two long ones, north and south, we used the road as a split. So he had a twenty five to the south and plus or minus twenty five to the north. He sold the one to the north to someone else and kept the one that twenty five there to use adjacent to. So no minor land division. There was already existing two parcels. There are still two parcels. He's not trying to go around the whole subdivision process. The code allows this. Uh, forty acre split into ten or four tens. And. It's pretty clean cut. I mean, the way we see it, that's why we applied for it that way. Not trying to get around anything. He doesn't have another. Minor land division next door, nor has he completed one prior to this. So we have a twenty five that was previously existing only in a different configuration, like we said. So that would be our our one shot.
No.
I was sending you messages to Phil Path. Okay. Okay, we'll go ahead and close for any further testimony. Uh, yeah, this is similar again, and once again, I don't blame you guys for your interpretation. I think, I think. Kind of got, must have got the loss of the week, but. As with the last file, the intent was to. Give them one. And then anything beyond that, they had to power, they had to power subdivision. So I think this once again applies. Just like the file before. Well, if that's the case, I will entertain a motion to overturn the streams.
I'm looking to overturn the administrative decision of Bonner County Planning Department for denial of this project filed M L D double off fifty one, statute twenty two. At O'Grady, they request to divide a forty and create eight acre parcel into four lots. One. Ten point oh two acre lot. One ten point four five acre lot, one ten five acre lot and. Oh, seven acre lot, finding that isn't afforded to Bonner County revised code, a further move to adopt finding in fact. Conclusions of laws set forth in staff memo. And direct planning staff draft written findings and conclusions reflect the decision. After. Chairman sign and print head to all interested parties. The action does not result in the taking of private.
And I'll still come for a chair in a second. We'll call this.
Hi. Hi.